All right, well, let's get started. We have your RCMP here tonight.
So I just wanted to let everyone know that I appreciate the opportunity to start Thursday job. You're stuck with me for a little while. Sorry about that.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. So yeah, I found out Thursday night, and I guess Randy already knew that I was gonna tell everyone tonight, which I am if you don't know. So I will be the go-to guy for town and council on whatever you guys need me to provide you with, work together, split forward to. And I don't have anything else prepared. Other than that, I was just gonna kind of deal with it, introduce to whom I don't know, think I know everybody else now, and answer questions if what you might have. I like the rent. Oh, sorry?
Yeah, rent.
Oh, I agree, but you gotta go to Winnipeg for that.
Today, we actually just got notification back, and they'll be talking to you and to Corinne also, that they're setting up a meeting within February, within the next month, because there is a few people that are...
Oh, right, with that de-service agreement?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah, that's correct. I was told that today too. So Bruce Pran, who's the, I believe, a superintendent or the inspector that keeps care of that contracting and stuff, is gonna try to arrange a date to come back. So it'd be good if you all are, you know, a proportion of you would be there to hear about it, to see all that order breakdown there's in the first.
When is he coming?
I'll be there, I'm sorry.
In February sometime.
Okay.
Have you come across a scenario where there has been a municipality and then a reserve and then like that close proximity where they have a detachment themselves and the town has theirs? As your... Where is it?
Like, what do you mean, like?
Well, I'm just... Yeah, like, I'm just thinking about if we were to look at our formula right now.
Sure.
And because at the end of the day, if we just say, could you please adjust it? They're... They'll just say, well, no, this is what that goes across Canada. So if we look at it and say, you know, due to this and this, we feel that, you know, the proximity here, maybe if we tweaked our formula this way, because X number of members are gone and this, you know, is that... Have you seen that scenario where it's been this?
Not so much. I think you're pretty much, it isn't whether they pay for member and there's nothing else to... Whether they're working or not.
Okay.
It's in the agreement.
Yes, I think what Trevor's trying to say is like, we have two detachments within two kilometers.
Yep.
Have you ever experienced that any place else?
Uh, let's see, um, you know what? No, I don't think so. There normally one works out of one and covers both, but it's unique there because that, that is federal money that's all the RCMP that goes into that.
Yeah.
Paying for their salary, because it's called a CTA, Community Triparte Agreement. That's between the provincial government, the OCN, and the federal government, right? And that's why you see that. If that CTA wasn't there, I'm pretty sure we all been still involved.
Well, usually, up until, up until they built that detachment, all the, there was OCN RCMP members that were housed in the town detachment, right? And that reduced the rent, right?
Makes sense.
And that, you know, it was, yeah, when, yeah, the number of bodies was, was less so for the town's portion, so, you know, that rent was spread across a bigger...
Makes sense.
Bigger amount of people.
Does council, because I've been on a short period of time, does council still get that report from the RCMP, you know, this is the breakdown of?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we get our quarterly billings, that's all breakdown of everything.
Okay.
Oh, you mean like the monthly stats?
Yeah, stats, okay, okay.
Get them.
Okay, all right.
Another thing to bring up too, with previous council, we had sent a letter to the RCMP about the lack of filling the positions for the Highway Patrol, because some of the positions weren't, weren't filled, they were hard to fill, and I was contacted today, and those will be filled by spring. We've already hired people for the positions.
Yeah, one of the...
And one will be coming back, you had mentioned, so...
That's right. So there's three, one being a supervisor, two being, one's a corporal, two constables. The corporal has been vacant for some time, they just filled it. The guy was actually up here looking at housing today. I had just made a quick move, and the other constable was working, and the other one was ODS with injuries that I'm not privy to, but should be, I'm told back working.
Yeah, and when we initially started, there was four members, I understood, but one was for a dog, they cut for the dog?
Well, what happened was there was four, and one worked out of Cranberry Courtage.
Okay.
Right before I arrived, and when I got into the Paw, a year and a half ago, they dissolved that, made it a dog.
Okay.
Who's been off work for over eight months now too?
How many members do we have?
Uh, okay, so if you're talking just about dog, there are twenty-six, eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah. We're actually one, one STE, which we call Circus Two Establishment, so we want, we have on paper, one extra body working. However, we have one suspended and one on permanent admin. So we're actually, boots on the ground over one short. Does that make sense?
Seventeen.
Yeah. But on paper, we're supposed to have eighteen. Seventeen boots are on the ground, we have nineteen on paper now. And why we're one STE is because we got reduced from a five-year posting to four about eight months ago, and that goes for the members who were here or coming in, it's now four. They did a study in five years policing the Paw's burnout, their burn, attempt to go back. And it's true, I can see it already.
Really?
And talks is the same. There's a lot of detachments, you're just burned out, because even your call on days off, they come back in, it just doesn't stop.
So that, that brings up, like, how busy are you guys?
Extremely.
Share your budget?
And I don't sugarcoat nothing, like, that video goes off nonstop. I come in today, I do the high-risk files, so I pull the stats from Friday when I leave work. I wasn't working last Friday, so it's a little bit higher than normal, but let's just say I do work on a normal Friday. I will pull from four o'clock when I leave till Monday morning at eight, and there's typically about a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy some hours, ranging from my cat in the tree to six people in the hospital, or one in Winnipeg or one dead.
Yeah.
The way it's been going, I'm sure you've all heard, this is a big incident, I try to call Randy or whoever, it's a few times I won't report everything, but just because I don't get to the phone. But for the most part, I think we've been pretty good at it. Since December fourteenth, count the OCN, we've had a murder, a murder-suicide, we've had four gun calls, two being armed and barricaded people in the house that look combed, we've had seven, no, sorry, nine suicides. I think it's nine suicides.
In just over a month?
Since December fourteenth.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, what's the other stat? I can't remember, sorry, I should have run it down. I believe it was something like three or four aggravated assaults, and then assaults are like in the twenties some. And you gotta remember the suicide, I guess three, four members sitting at a house, they can't just leave and say, well, I'll go to that call, because you don't know as a suicide later rule in suicides, you gotta, you gotta keep that house under lockdown duty for evidence, and no one will interrupt.
Okay, yeah, right.
Lockdown is what we call it, lockdown. So that's the thing, like, one call doesn't turn into one member, and then the other six can still do whatever, it turns into three or four, and you're down with two, and you're just going, we pray, we got nothing else to pay. And then you do, you're on the phone to the guy, sort these off. They wanna say, they wanna say, no, I can't come in, because I need to burn, but they kinda, because they take their part in the team, they have to help, right?
How's your overtime cost?
High.
Very high?
I don't think it's high last year though.
No?
Cheers, but yeah, I think my rural size is higher than my, my municipal size.
That's good news.
But in saying that, what they do is when we put prisoners, and this is out of my control, I'm not too sure how it is, I'm trying to learn it, core commissioners are our patrons and guards, when we lodge prisoners, they all gets charged to the rural, I don't know why it's done that way, and then they, they kind of figure out where they were, paper trail, they get the cost shared. So in about a month or two, I'll see that it'll, the municipal side will creep up.
So your percentage was up, like, was up, like, did they work at thirty percent overtime in that, or?
Sorry, say it again, how much overtime?
On a percentage, you're pulling out, like, did they get like thirty, forty percent overtime?
Uh, it's as much as you want, to be honest, but I would say it would average out, yeah. Yeah, I would say, you know, like, a constable's making nearly ninety, you know, all those guys are, yeah, one twenty, one twenty-five. So yeah, probably thirty, thirty-five percent. I don't get enough overtime, actually.
Is it like, um, more members getting called, like, to actually respond, or is it paperwork? Is, is there something?
Never paperwork.
Okay.
It's seen security or transporting mental health patients to Winnipeg.
That's a big one, eh?
That's always a big issue.
And the big, the Mental Health Act, and that's always this crap, because it's all laid on the police. I don't know who wrote this, who drew to this, but it's in, it's in our policies, it's, the RCLP will transport, form for people that a doctor designates. Everyone else has walked away from it. The police take them, like, on the plane with the prisoner, or driving it all the way there.
Driving.
So six-hour drive, and then it isn't just, here you go, doctor, it's sit on the floor with them, wait hours, doctor still sees them again, when it's another hour or two, finally the doctor will come out after four or five hours, yeah, you're clear, so then he can drive back, it's two months a day, so it's an overnight, paying for all the meals, and then the six-hour drive back, double time, all of it.
What are they, what are they going to be seen for?
Well, whatever the doctor designates to be seen, a physician or a vet to stay somewhere. So it's, it's all mental health, it's all mental health. And it's, it's, it's a growing, growing problem all over.
So is it, is it, we don't have a psychiatrist here in the Paw, or is?
No, usually it's like their, their form for means they need a vet, so they're going in for like a weekend or long-term evaluation. Yeah, and you're, they, the doctor has the authority to make that call and to tell you what vet, where to go. It's whoever kind of has an opening, so sometimes it's, I remember when I was enrolled, when we brought someone to the Paw, but usually it's Winnipeg with Randy, I've seen him go to Saskatoon.
Are they in custody during that? So they're in custody?
Yes, yes. Once they're formed for, they're in custody of the RCMP, until a physician says, yeah, he's able to be released to go.
And then he's, like, is he a prisoner? Like, I'm sorry, I don't know the, like...
Uh, I don't wanna say he's a prisoner, but he's under arrest.
He's under arrest?
He's gotta do what we tell him to do. He can't leave, he can't do anything until the hospital says, okay, you're now, we take his custody.
Any idea, could you figure out how much we spend a year on that?
I probably could do, yeah, I could get one of the girls to run the stats. We track, we have a template specifically for it, because Winnipeg is tracking how many hours the RCMP across the province is doing this. It's in millions, I bet.
Well, it would be interesting to know, because if, if the RHA had that service here, it'd save the taxpayers of the town of the Paw some money.
Come on, I totally agree with you. You're not the only council saying this, like, this is the, I heard this, I was enrolled for seven years before here, doctors every week, pretty much.
Really?
I said, you know what, I'm on board with you, I just don't have the power to change things.
Sheriff couldn't do it?
We asked that, apparently no. The RCMP's, the RCMP's baby until a number of years ago.
But the, I mean, not, but the same, even if, and I'm not saying that, we can't look into this, but the mental health, like psychiatrists and stuff like that, there are positions in Winnipeg that they can't fill, because there's such a shortage across Canada for those types of individuals. So even if you did have the money to have them here, it'd be a real tough sell to get somebody to come up here, but they can't fill Winnipeg.
And then, there's this, there's a new thing too, with a sexual assault victim who's a minor, like seventeen, or a doctor can't see them anywhere else, they gotta wait just to, so that's a given. So a doctor here, even if you try to take them in, they'll say, oh, she's a minor, she gets treated in Winnipeg.
Okay, um, I wanna be careful that my comments, my next comments aren't misconstrued by anybody.
Oh, see, that is it.
Okay, so if there is a sexual assault that occurs on OCN with a minor, are the taxpayers of the town of the Paw paying to transport that person to Winnipeg?
OCN pays for that. And I'm very particular when overtime's claimed and to where it is, I make sure it's double-checked, to say, no, this is the wrong, we call it a coal air code, every town, a rural or OCN has a code, and I make sure that it gets charged to the right place.
Okay.
So some members, like, be honest, they have time when they miss, claim it, put it on their own code, I'll deny it, send it back, send it back to OCN, just because they might take over at the hospital for an OCN patient in the Paw, thinking it's a Paw file, but it's not, it's an OCN. So rich starts is where the money trades.
Will one of your eighteen members be the ones taking them to Winnipeg?
Well, yeah, all the time.
So does that take away then from policing in the Paw, because one of them are down there?
Yeah, sometimes.
Even though, if it happens to be an OCN resident that they're transporting?
Yeah.
How is that fair to the taxpayer of the town of the Paw?
But then, whatever it's, whatever it's overtime, you just charge it back to rural so.
I get that, but we, we've removed the working piece of the puzzle, because he's transporting somebody else's citizen to Winnipeg.
Gotcha.
Meanwhile, policing needs of the town that's, that he works for is being missed, or we have to get overtime to cover that hole.
Yeah. So what'll happen ideally is we'll try to have an OCN member stick with the OCN member to go down, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Shouldn't be a Paw member.
Yeah.
But there's times when there's two OCN members on the schedule, that one's on training, one's not working, a day off, and then all of a sudden, the OCN prisoner has to go down. A Paw member will transfer, because we have no other option, we gotta do it. So they'll transfer, but we try to get, they're gone, the overtime is charged to the OCN, now the body that's missing in Paw, we try to fill, but it's on overtime again. How do you bring a Paw member back in and not pay him overtime on his day off?
And so then we would pay for the overtime to the person being brought in? They would pay that as well?
Because that situation is caused by OCN.
Oh, so they would pay the overtime over in a, oh, okay.
But a Paw member would still fill for OCN on the overtime.
No, no, I realize, but I'm just making sure, yeah.
Can we negotiate an order for it, so it can be brought in to fill that spot?
Nope, OCN paid it back. It might be a Paw member, but OCN would pay the overtime, because that person's short, because of the law.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I explain that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, for sure.
No, I'm sure, as you guys, because...
Yeah, no, I get it, yeah.
Sorry if I said it different to start with, but that's right.
Um, we won't see you again before this, but we have a public hearing coming up on the walking paths.
Yeah.
And there's a resolution in place to shut them all down.
Okay.
How much time do you spend in those three areas?
Not enough.
No?
You know, we'd like to spend more, like, and I mean in a proactive way, but the time that we spend in those areas would be a recall to those areas, and I wouldn't have those stats in front of me.
Would you say that those walking paths are a problem for the RCMP in the Paw? Do you get?
I wouldn't say so.
No?
No. I'm one of those guys that, like, I get the idea of why you close in that sense, or that I'm like, if something's gonna happen, or, you know, if it's gonna happen, no matter what you do, but you know.
Whether that walking path is there or not.
Yeah, that's quite a true belief, yeah. It might be, it might make it simpler for them and such, and noise at night and stuff, but I think it's gonna happen, because those people that are doing it are there when they shouldn't be, or allowed to, or watch.
So one of the other things that was brought up in the past too, was the cost when it comes to children under CFS care, and if they are missing curfew and stuff. And at one point, that was a huge cost to the town, as the RCMP, is that still a pretty high factor in?
I'd say it's higher than you wanted to, but I think it's gotten better. A lot of Raywalls and CF matters are more like, more on OCN than on the Paw. They're having a little more problems with that than we are, but they're still safe, of course, there's some costs there, but, like, I've only been here a year and a half, remember that, please? I go to, I see that going down.
Good. See, at one point, that was a big priority, because of someone underage, that was, you guys had to pull whatever you could and look for that child.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, it was the same kids, but there was nothing you could do.
Yeah, I agree. CFs is a challenge.
Yeah, and it was a high cost.
Yeah, I don't wanna say anything disrespectful, but...
No, for sure not.
They might say the same about us, the RCLP, but I think we do a little bit more of their job that we shouldn't be doing, and they actually do a lot of jobs, so I'll leave it at that.
Are there any other areas, like, I'm glad we talked about the sexual assault one, where we're, so, to me, that's kind of things to talk about when we're looking at adjusting our rent.
Sure.
Because we do have that other facility so close, so if we're being accommodated, which I get it, it's all about being a team, getting the things done together. So, other than that scenario, and the, is there any other ones that you can think of, where we kind of, you know, like, are our stenos doing some paperwork for, when their stenos are off, or, or, like, is there any other?
No, no. You know what, there's the extreme case where they might be adding a little bit of CPIC for Jamie on the OCN side when she's off, but really, there's no other alternative to that. But it would be very, but we're not doing any paperwork for them. They're running their own show, looking for those work. Well, it's pretty good. And then, as far as scenarios for transporting and all that kind of stuff, you know, I don't think there's...
With three to four new members coming in, will there be any transferring out, or will we, yeah?
So that's why we're, we're one STE, because there's, there's five doing, you know, this year, five have done their four years.
Five.
Yeah. So that, they're not stopping, they're, they're just trying to get that number up before they leave. And that excess of bodies here, in the meantime, wouldn't come off your budget either. That would put a separate coal air code paid by the district in the posse.
Okay.
So you'll only ever pay for your eighteen, whether they're working or not. That's, that's kind of what, that's kind of where it hurts. I think it's, you know, you gotta maternity leave, or, you know, or someone ODS, or still paying their salary, because they're, they have a situation, but their boots aren't on the ground. And if that's not done, that's everywhere, though, it's not you, so.
Spring's just around the corner, weather's gonna get warmer, first thing we're gonna hear about is curfew by law. What do you think?
I think we touched on this a little, that coalition meeting, I don't know, I think it's just another, I think it's another thing to enforce that you're not gonna have the time to get a ground law. Like, what, I guess it would be, what are your goals or your plans to enforce the curfew? I guess the truth is that there's so much pulling in this town, in so many different directions, the policing, your street people, the IPTAs, the violence, the assaults, the everything, it's just, it doesn't stop, there's really no break for them. Like, we'd have a little break in the last little, like, two days, week or so, but the guys, paperwork is a little that far behind, that's the problem now, so they're getting to that, getting all that sorted out, starting again, so. We're bringing in another member or two for trappers, they're trying to help the police in that.
Bring some tickets.
Well, that traffic's, we're bringing in a traffic member, so the traffic services make for that member to come up. So yeah, that'll, that'll kind of help the town produce some revenue. Yes.
Um, any insight into the, uh, street people population, um, any, I guess in terms of what you could be doing, or what the town as a whole could be doing to try and change?
Well, the street people, frankly, are a social problem.
For sure.
It is a hundred percent. I'll be honest, the police are an eight-hour solution to that problem. We would, we would greatly work with the town or anyone that wants to do something, but it's gotta be within your power to do it, right? We can't just go and say, you know, you move along, we can do that, and say, let's go over lawyer and stuff, they're gonna listen to us, but the minute we do that, they're gonna be right back when they were, they elaborate. So I don't know, it's a tough answer. I have that SCAD meeting that I started up, and there was about fifteen, sixteen of us at the first meeting that were sitting together, and that's the first thing we talked about for like an hour.
Yeah.
And we're having one in February, and we've got a little bit bigger people coming in to that, and know what's gonna be talked about again, which is fine, but I don't really, I don't really want the answers to the problem.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
Lord, I agree with you.
I totally agree with you.
But the problem is, uh, human rights issue there, there's, I don't know, the community...
And the health?
It's tough, it's tough. I don't know what the answer is. I wish I did, I wish I could... But, like, I'll be honest, and I'm, if it was a police problem, strictly, I would say it's a police problem, and I would work on it, but it's a society problem, it's not an enforcement problem. We're an eight-hour solution in a tank, and they go back out. And I get a lot of, what are the police doing, like, excuse me, if you work in the town, what are you doing about it? It's your town, not my town. Do you know what I mean? I'm here to help you, I'm here to definitely work with you, but it's not the police to lead it. With the deal with addictions, that's a society problem.
When you put them up for eight hours, what's it cost?
Uh, what would be, you count, you want the, the RCMP wage, do you want to play?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So, say a constable lodges them, you're forty bucks an hour, you know, but it wouldn't be for the full eight hours, right? Okay, so we say it's an hour, forty bucks to lodge them, and then you're paying a core commissioner, uh, eighteen dollars an hour to watch the prisoner. So eighty, what's it, twelve hundred?
Couple hundred bucks minimum?
Probably a hundred eighty-five bucks, yeah.
I think about it, I mean, your administration and everything else, you're probably up there too.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Five hundred bucks.
Yeah, okay, well, in an hour lodging, I was kind of going with a little bit of paperwork there, because type of dispatches, take twenty minutes to physically grab them, put them in a cell, search, call in the major, half hour, forty minutes, and fifty minutes paperwork.
Yeah, but then you got your, you got everything else, you got your administration, probably five hundred bucks.
Do you have to take them to?
Not for, no, no, it wouldn't be close to that.
Do you have to take them to the hospital every time?
No, no.
No, just straight to cells?
Straight to cells, unless there's an injury that we see, or they're complaining of some kind of thing, you can't deny them that. I mean, you can call them bullshit, but if, I could go back to haunt you too, right?
Yeah. And any idea how many in here you'll lodge?
Okay, so prisoners last year was about twenty-five hundred. Now, a lot of those are IPTAs, but I wanna say the percentage was around sixty-some percent. And unfortunately, a high number of sixty-some percent are from the Paw, yeah, that's what's frustrating.
I can't remember the stat, but there was a stat that said, out of the amount that were put in jail, it was literally ten of the same people that were multiple times.
That's right. We deal, the theme of policing is you deal with four percent of the population ninety percent of the time, and that's so true here. So yeah, I would say, I won't say ninety, but a very high percentage of our workers just lodge it. They know them all by name, they have nicknames, they know the members, like, because they're put in jail like four or five times a week, some of them. A lot of Moose Lakers, a lot of Buck, a lot of Chum, a lot of, well, even if you're in Ponsen, that's a lot, mainly it's Buck that's logged in Moose Lake.
And that's just because of whatever.
Geographics?
Yeah, geographic, the train, they're just getting them.
I agree. It's tough, like, it'd be nice to...
Like, I've stopped and talked a lot, so it's, they, they're here to, like, it's just like hanging out.
Yeah, yeah.
If you send them a walk-in ball together, I don't, yeah, it's just tough. I've, I've never seen it like this, I've never, at least in very, very busy spots, but I've never seen the actual transient group like here. I'm happy with that.
Did they ever protest about ending up in cells, or are they happy to have somewhere to spend the night?
Uh, you know what, I would say it's fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty?
Yeah. I'd say, yeah.
Fifty-fifty, because I'm, I just, very, very dirty math, right? Twenty-five hundred people at sixty percent for two hundred a head, that's three hundred thousand a year we're spending.
Seems high, but no, that's off those numbers, yeah. I could actually go back, I remember Chad and I, he could actually did that.
Yeah, that's who it was.
He broke it right down, because he was asking, he's like, do you mind if I just go ahead? I'm like, do I mind? You do. Yeah, so he broke it down, and I don't think it hit those numbers, but it was high.
I feel like there was, that Chad had said at, at a meeting, that it was approximately eighteen thousand dollars a month, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, well, it was like, you had two something.
Two-twenty.
Yeah, but that, that sounds like a good number, sure.
He was the one that had the stats, though.
Yeah, he did, because I know, he had come to me, said, one, like, community meeting or whatever, can I do the stats to you? Because he didn't know how, he doesn't know how to write those reports, so I showed him very quickly, and then I left it with him. And I did remember seeing the sheet.
I think this was, it was last June when I remember hearing the number, but I kind of think that was the number, kind of sort of sixteen or eighteen thousand, I think.
I think it was Stuart Campbell, I don't know if you remember who Stuart Campbell is, he's from, I think it was like, I think last year, he was lost to, or, or thirty-one hundred or something.
True, that much, right?
That's almost close. Three days, three quarters of the year, they go, they don't want.
Yeah. And then, when everything's going off, the first two, right?
Yeah, quite often, yeah, I would say every time, but often, yeah.
Yeah, he's, yes, he's...
That's right.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, not that I expect you give me an answer for one of these individuals, but, but in terms, but where, where are they staying?
Like, so, yeah, where they stay? Home shelter or in the, in the streets?
Is, is it, are most of them staying at the home shelter or who do you think?
I don't know.
Or where are they at?
That's where most of them stay. Most of them.
And most of, like, a lot of the time, you know, if there's issues at the home shelter, they have to call the RCP to come in.
Yeah. They're kicked out, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Cause it's gotta be safe for everybody at the home shelter, right?
Sure. Do you want to change, they mean in the home shelter? Better stay one hour longer, I was like.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Take one seven, I think, I think is what, the only change I remember at home shelter.
The hours change in that, right? They, there's not a.
Like, I, I would love, I would love how it works. Call their community and say, listen, your guys here, you're getting money to take care of this guy. We're bringing it back to you. Please, please honor that. You got a role to take care of, right?
Yeah.
Ken, like, you got an authority, like a truck. Or, or legally, you would be allowed to do that, like.
We can always offer the assistance to help people. We're a family community. We want people to get home to their families and sometimes it would be much better for us to pay the price to get them home to their families.
True. But then the communities, they're not, they're where they're from and they're not, they don't work. They got more money than we do. They don't, they don't, they don't, they don't care what they want. I do. I don't know what they're saying.
Thanks for cheering us up.
Yeah. I would love to have it, I got this figured out.
I've got the answer.
Good luck with your new job.
Uh, I forget his name. Uh, man, one of Bruce's friends, Dave, works at, manager at Shane's Music.
David Roberts.
Robert. So you, you actually had the scam meeting. He said something. He said, great, can I, you know, minute to say something? I said, yeah, but, so he's like, just to bring some hope here, he goes, I don't have the answer for this, but he goes, he grew up in Halifax and he said, uh, the harbor front there when he grew up was a no-go zone. He said it was rough. You looked the wrong way, you'd get shanked or hit with something. Said it was rough, 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 but he said, his dad, parents, everyone, do not go down there. If you go down there, like, you're gonna get it when you get home. So anyway, he moves, uh, I don't know if it's the park, moves up west for some time. He went back to Halifax. And that whole harbor front there is cleaned up, cleaned up. There's none of that stuff is there anymore. They may have moved somewhere else to his knowledge or maybe just down a couple miles or something. He goes, it's not there. And he goes, I wonder what made that change? And he was, so there's hope that, like, there is poss- possibility. He said, if they can do that, why can't this town clean up, do that way?
Well, there's different avenues that are being tried in different communities. Like, I mean, Yellowknife is trying a way of doing it Ottawa, Winnipeg, in wet centers and Worthenale, saying stuff like that. There is stuff out there.
There's dry houses.
Dry houses, yeah. And, uh, it gets to get everybody on board, very fit to deal with it, eh? And it, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight.
Yes, I agree.
And, uh, like you get Thompson, their equal treatment center, whatever. I think they get three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year from amount of liquor and lottery.
Yeah.
To run their treatment center.
Okay.
Well, that's something you gotta look at is, is getting that money in to do things here too.
True. I agree.
Do they actually get charged with anything when they're drinking in a public place or scouting on the street, taking leave on somebody's balloon or?
Well, you know what? If it's just alcohol on the street, no. Cause they have no means of paying a penalty for it. But they have at first, my understanding, and I know other places we have charged them. They go before the judge and the judge is like, okay, so you're, he's been, oh, yeah. We're not fighting here, nothing. You already have no penalty here, names, business. We don't have anymore. So at least they're rightfully in charge. It'll cost you more money in the end to pay the charge.
You have paperwork.
So, so we don't do it. Now, in extreme cases, if there's assault, maybe some mischief of your name or something, yeah, we'll charge them. They get stayed, basically. So it's an avenue, but it's, it doesn't work.
I think if we, if we get the stats from you and the stats from whatever, then maybe we can go forward to add anything to the problems to do something, you know? I think the stats are the thing that seems to do some work.
Brandon, you know, you say, Brandon, if you want this specific, why doesn't he? I'll have it for you.
Okay. I heard years ago, and before my time here, it used to happen, the same instance like you're talking about. The judge used to say, okay, that's your third time. And then they would serve time in Egg Lake, which a lot of the prisoners would like to go to, cause it did, it was rehabilitative in a sense, cause you were doing something, you were productive. And, and then, and people, like, I talked to, said that they didn't notice as big as a problem as it is now. Whether or not that's the, uh, the reason why back then, I don't know. Maybe the numbers are just completely out of whack now and.
But I do remember that, Trevor, and it was a good thing because they would take them there, but they would also teach them how to do brushing and stuff and and I know when I worked at the RM, they were doing that for the RM at a reduced rate, but they were still making money and they were learning a trade.
Exactly.
So a lot of them, when they come out of there, had something that they were educated to do or not educated, but experienced.
Break from the alcohol long enough that it cleans them up. Very good medical assistance wasn't there.
Well, they got fed proper drinks. They got medical assistance. They got everything given. And without alcohol.
And then if they feel like you go or reoffend, then it it changes the dynamic that you're sure you don't want, no help.
Well, there's some of those, there are.
Is there, uh? I don't really wanna cut you guys too short. Is there anything more we need to ask? We, we, cause we got lots more to go through, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I agree. That's it. Thanks for coming. You'll be in touch.
And we talked earlier, Brent, about maybe once a month at one of the meetings to come and just do a quick update.
Yeah, I can, going forward, I'll give you guys a, like, a, an update with, uh, specific events, stuff that's going on, personnel, the bachelor pool, and, uh, perfect, uh, email and passing any staffs.
Yep.
We'll go again.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okey-dokey, lagoon upgrades, second opinion, issue sheet from engineering.
Oh, wow.
That's you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, so mayor and council asked us to, uh, look for a second opinion, so we reached out to the local consulting, uh, to get a second opinion, which we should have attached your minutes as well. So I was just asking that council, please review the scope of work to ensure it kind of encapsulates what you guys wanted. Uh, there was three items specifically that analyzed wastewater treatment performance data and determined if Cousins' report recommendations are supported relative to current regulations in Antioch. Uh, investigate the possibility of phasing the upgrades to determine capital spending can be deferred uh, to reduce lifecycle costs. Uh, that would help be in consultation with water services for the state of development. And also explore alternative upgrade options relative to your report, if those are two kind of fall short. Did I capture the scope? Would you guys, uh, want it effectively? I guess that was the first question.
Roger.
Well, for me, that's, I mean, you know, we're gonna spend, potentially spend fourteen million dollars and I think investing a little bit more money into our due diligence would help me understand, uh, I'd be comfortable with moving forward. I mean, we should, it's not that maybe JR Cousins is, uh, is a good company and everything is the way it should be, but I don't have the technical expertise to say that.
Yeah, and so that's the first question is if you guys are comfortable with the scope. The second question is, how would you like us to proceed forward? Uh, because of the dollar value, it puts us into a tendering according to policy. However, if mayor and council would like, we can, and I, and maybe you wanna speak.
I would prefer, I think this is something, the time is of the essence to council. We wanna rush this as quickly as we can. What I would suggest we do is we have a resolution of council that says that we can bypass the policy this one time and that you authorize myself to sign it under my twenty-five thousand dollar approval. So that this way we could turn around tomorrow and tell them, get going on it and we'll pass the resolution at the next meeting. Cause we do have the authority where we can bypass the policy by council approving that.
I'd be good with that.
And where would we, where, where we're gonna pick, come this, take this out of? Usually.
I'm sorry.
Like, like the, what budgetary line?
Oh, oh, the money, where's the money coming from?
Yeah, we're, we're just a suggestion.
We smiled at Graham.
Yeah, since we are going to a new budget year, so it can be put forward as a capital for twenty nineteen as well to, to fund it.
Would this, uh, when, when, with the grant money that's out there, can any of that's, any cost on preliminary engineering and all that sort of good stuff be pulled back into the grant?
Uh, not this quickly, no.
Oh, not right in a second, but down the road, it would cover, could that be covered?
Retroactively, no. Retroactively, no. Once you start a project, they want the grant money on the front end of the project, yeah.
So do I have the approval to move forward with getting a resolution prepared for next meeting? But that we initiate this now when I can sign off on it to get it going?
Well, what's your thoughts, Chuck?
No, I think we should, if you guys wanna do this, go to the second opinion, which I think, like you said, spending the fourteen million plus dollars is a big ask and, uh, let's just dot all our i's and cross all the t's before we get there. And I think it's, for, for eleven thousand and change, I think it's a little worth the money.
What do you think, Bill? Yeah?
Yeah.
You're good with it, Larry? Yeah? So consensus is we move forward.
Okay, so I'll be bringing up, forward that resolution. I'll sign off on this so that we can get moving. Graham, do you have any comment on that?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, reduced speed zones, issue from the engineering department.
Uh, back on December nineteenth, council other presentation from, uh, Ms. Amanda Lafflin on reduced speed zones for our community. And you guys asked us to put together, uh, some pricing, preliminary pricing, uh, what it would take for us to introduce the speed zones in our community. So I broke it down by schools. Uh, again, this is based on some quotes from Mayor Mastromas signage, looking through the, uh, guide for establishing reduced speed zone for the number of signs. It's a little bit unclear. It's a little tricky in some places. We have cross-sections of roads crossing area. Uh, so these are just preliminary. Also, I broke out what I believe to be the highway portions of all of those costs, just so we have that breakdown. I did make, I did put a caveat in here regarding, um, Opaska School on the highway side, um, they are the, they are the traffic, sorry, I always get this mixed up. They're the traffic authority there, so anything that went to do with that, we would need their approval. Uh, but if we, if they did not approve it, we could still move, sorry, we are the traffic authority, so we can move ahead with that one regardless of their approval or not. The reason I bring that one up, uh, in some preliminary discussions, um, because there is no sidewalk to cross the street on Gordon. They don't understand necessarily, I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't put words in their mouth. Um, they would, they would have to review it at a high level to make sure that that would be appropriate there or not. So we could still move ahead with it and spend the money ourselves if they were to deny it, if that's something you guys wanna do for, for Gordon.
I would have the same question about Gordon, because when would you cross the street at Gordon?
So, so the kids already do, I believe, to cross the tracks, even though it's illegal to do so, the kids are doing it, so, um,
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
They cut, they cut across the tracks to get home. So it is happening and that's something with, like, I, I guess, um, at a certain point, you would have a discussion with the school division, bring them on board, let's say, about the pricing. They'll, to ensure that, well, cause there's, there's, there's a lot of nuance to how you can spread the zones out and maybe interconnect some of the zones, so I think potentially.
Would there be some risk that HBR or where it was not switching or that with that, uh, young kids.
Really care about the roll, yeah.
Yeah. And you just seem to do it all the time?
And, and the, they used to have fencing along that entire area, so that's where they diverted it, but, um, they removed all their fencing along, uh, the tracks.
It was good.
Um, and I, again, the history of that, I'm not very clear on, but I think once you have fencing, you have to maintain the fencing, so it's either maintain what you have or just remove it and lose that liability, I guess, obviously. And I believe that's my, my understanding as well.
That's why they did it behind big rooms.
So Gordon, management of Highways, would pay for the signs?
All the, yeah, Gordon, Third Street and Grace Lake Road.
They would pay their cost.
Correct. If, if approved.
If approved.
Yeah.
The, uh, not the state, I mean, I, I know it's an important thing to have or whatever, but like, the, these groups, like Neighborhoods Alive and a few other, like, to me, this has got their name written all over it in terms of, you know, keeping citizens on patrol.
Yeah.
Uh, are there, not any of these organizations have other access to grants or funds that they maybe, I'm not saying you need to go and, and start shaking the bushes, but the, you know, cause even add to that, I know in some communities, and I don't know, maybe the community's paying for it, they have those nice speed limits, like, the one side that tells you the speed.
Speed, you're here.
And links, I don't know if they're solar powered or however they're powered, but those are kinda nice, but, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like a, a, a lot of money when I think maybe some of these organizations may be sitting on money and wondering for a project to do.
Terry McCallum. Do you remember when she did all the, she did funding for all of this at one time?
She's a huge proponent of the reduced speed zones too. I think originally she brought it to, to me several years back. So she's definitely a proponent of wanting to do this, so if she has access to some funding, that'd be.
And for that matter, I mean, MPI, that's where citizens on patrol get their, uh,
Some of their funding?
Their, their, uh, their get out when they do their, their little speed watch stuff. So maybe if you bought those, those little signs, maybe they would, I don't know, just something to think about because again, what budget line is this going to come out of?
It's a lot of money.
Yeah. So.
Could we phase this in over a few years? Could we do Poska this year, MBCI next year, Mary Duncan?
Yeah, there's nothing in the regs that suggests that you can't, uh, pass your bylaw, uh, section by section and sort of implement it that way. If you, we can determine what are some higher-risk areas potentially, maybe the, we do the younger kids first and kind of work our way backwards from there.
Mm-huh.
Um, that is, uh, definitely a possibility.
Yeah, like a big Poska, Chelsea School, there are, there are two main ones. The first one, I have to worry about, uh, small children, vehicles.
Yeah. And luckily Scott even only has that one section of roads potentially. Um, it's, it's maybe less of a risk and then.
Where are we getting the, uh, the, the, how we get that cost estimate?
I, I just put it together based on what the, so I, I got, uh, drafting to try, kind of pull up a map and gave you the one hundred and fifty meter maximum radius distances for all the schools. Uh, and then going off of their, uh, the diagrams they have in the, uh, the speed zone, um, guide, uh, quantified, cause it's, it's quite intense. Like, you need a sign approaching saying you're about to reach a thirty kilometer zone. Then you need a sign that says school zone, your max speed, your bylaw and the times that it's enforced. If you only have it's like seasonal or, you know, just during the school hour. And then you need a sign saying now you've left the school zone, now you've left it. And then any intersecting road, you need a combination of the maximum sign and the, the times that it's enforced. Every time a road intersects that on both sides.
So.
Do you get speed on the sign? And what, what, what was, so like, if you're saying a post and a sign, what's that?
Uh, the thirty kilometers ahead sign with the post, eighty-five each, so it's one seventy plus tax, just for the sign and post, just for that line. Uh, the one with the school zone, max speed, bylaw, uh, you're looking at about three fifteen with the post plus tax. Uh, so, and then the end, so if you just had those three, three posts with the signs required without any intersecting roads, it's seven hundred plus tax plus install per side.
Plus install, yeah.
Plus install, plus tax, yeah. And the install potentially, like, the cost could come down if we maybe sourced it out or something to that effect. We would just still have to do the layout and make sure it was the right place and also taking in the signs as well, so.
I'd say we write a letter to Citizens on Patrol or another one of Neighborhoods Alive, asking for, uh, if they could write a letter for COP to write a letter to MPI to, to fund one of the earlier school and ask Neighborhoods Alive and see if they'll fund the other earlier school. And see what they say. And then, what if they say no and no? Read back here and then we'll figure, figure something out.
Is, is Neighborhoods Alive still alive?
Yeah. The, the, sorry, sir.
The park renewal?
I'm, I'm ten years back.
Okay.
I'm ten years back.
I think they're still kinda known as that.
Yeah, so that's the park.
I mean, a renewal.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think in Neighborhoods, I didn't hear that for a while.
I knew when you met.
Randy, do you know the, all the groups that were mentioned? I'm not really familiar with all the groups that were.
COPP and, um.
TPCOP.
Yeah.
Zero.
And MPI.
And MPI. If you, I've got a meeting next week with COPP, so if we could have a letter together, I could present it.
So you'll ask for the letters, get back to us with the response?
Yep.
We'll make a decision. We'll be well at the budget. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, planning and development. Uh, Harms.
So Ms. Harms came to the last meeting and we didn't have a chance to discuss it because we had to add it to this agenda. Um, basically, they want a written decision as to, from all of council as to why we're not interested.
I'm gonna step out, which is a.
I think at the meeting, we were pretty clear as to our reasons, so I guess if you wanted to dictate the meeting minutes and send it to them.
So it's basically to confirm that it was a concern, it was a one-time sale?
Yeah.
And that there was a concern about establishing a different price for the value of those lots. Am I correct in saying that?
Have we at any time, like, asked our lawyer about?
No.
No?
No.
Would that be worth just maybe asking, I don't know how much that would cost, but be kinda nice to just check to see if there's something there that's written in, in a way that, I don't know if everyone here has read through the entire document. I know I haven't, but just as, yeah.
There's a very vague little line in there that says that we could trans, or that upon council approval, that's it. Council approval, that's it.
So refresh, uh, the reason why we're concerned.
The, from, from my reasoning, as I had mentioned before, uh, you all sat through the Board of Revision, and there was a couple of existing property owners who applied, even though they couldn't use that sales information, they used the information of the thousand-dollar sales to get their fifty thousand dollar lots reduced to a thousand dollars. And the, the assessment branch, as you know, reduced them to forty-five thousand. The town's position thus far has been that, uh, this was a one-time special event, and that the thousand dollars doesn't accurately represent the market value of those properties. And we, my understanding is it was a one-time special event.
Yeah.
So if somebody didn't pursue, didn't, didn't build their home, and then they gave back the lot, then Council of the Day would determine what the sale prices of the lots would be going forward. And ideally, they would at least be, uh, what it cost us to create them, which is thirty-five or forty thousand.
Thirty-five to thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
So the concern now with, uh, the Harms is that if they sell that lot for whatever price they're trying to sell for, I don't know what it is, but it will now reflect the under-market value, but showing it as market value is that's what it's being sold for.
You'll be, basically, you'll be validating the thousand-dollar price range.
Exactly.
Because you've got the assessors, like, appraisers, you use comparative market data to come up with the assessment, and there are thirty sales at Clearwater Lake saying that they're worth a thousand dollars, so, um-
So I understand their concerns, because obviously they've, you know, they've invested somebody into their land and decided to, uh, so is there any way that they can go around that, where we don't end up having to, uh, inherit this new price for this lot?
Well, if we, if we, if we don't give it our blessing, I'm not sure that we have the legal ability to stop it, but if we don't give it our blessing, at least next fall, whenever the next Board of Revision is, you're gonna be able to say that we don't agree that the value of that land is only a thousand dollars. But if we give it our blessing, we are basically confirming that, yeah, that land's only worth a thousand bucks, so we're gonna reduce your assessments.
But is there, is like, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, is there a way that this was written up to reflect that the value of the land is not a thousand dollars?
The only place in that is, it would basically say in the transfer documents, we, as much as we sold them for a thousand, we put in there that the value was fifty thousand dollars, when they paid for the transfer fees, it was a fee based on fifty thousand dollars. But now, with this moving forward, that doesn't mean that they have to carry that, they can say it's a thousand dollars, or, or five thousand.
But if you have, uh, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, if you have something that shows that this was a special, one-time event only, and it separates, yeah, so I had a lot, I can't, I put ten grand into it because I can't, I just don't wanna build a house, and I'm leaving, and I sell it to Trevor for ten grand, if that value still stays at that, you know, still stays at the original fifty thousand, I'm just trying to find a win here for us, or for both parties, right? Because I completely understand what Herb's saying, um, that we don't want to validate that that's, those are all thousand-dollar lots, but at the same time-
If we go to court, if it does ever go to court, in, at whatever stage, like Trevor said, wouldn't we be better to consult our lawyers for them to read it? And then to come back to us and say, whatever, or, I, I'm, I'm like, uh, I, 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 I'm, I'm in the same boat, is, is that, how, how do we still keep that land at fifty thousand?
When they're out borrowing money, I guess, to build the home, what are they borrowing it at? Are they using the value of that land, you're selling that home later?
For sure you would.
Are you using it?
For sure.
So, I mean-
So if you are going to the bank and to borrow the money, would you say that the lot is worth fifty thousand?
Well, the lot is worth fifty thousand. It was only worth a thousand dollars for that day.
So how does the Board of Revisions work then, uh, for us to, how would they be able to validate that it's not worth fifty thousand?
By people coming back and appealing.
No, I know they appeal it, but, so we, we're saying, I go to the bank, I'm using it as, as, uh, you know, collateral to say it's worth forty-five thousand or fifty thousand dollars, but I sold it for a thousand, now all my taxes paid because it's only a thousand.
But the issue is, right, it all goes back on what cases we have. So she sells hers for five, and then someone else does the same thing, because that's the problem. Everybody, when they went for a thousand, said, nah, oh, I'll buy it, 'cause really, a thousand bucks, that's not a whole lot of skin to have in the game, or, that's not really, if I don't develop it, I'll develop it on a thousand bucks, no big deal. But if you got to thirty and forty, you're guaranteed, I gotta get my stuff in order, I gotta have a box and, and, and the foundation on, and I gotta have it done, because I don't wanna lose what I put into this. So now, we're kind of stuck here in a hard spot, because she, for whatever reason, and, you know, could be leaving a new job, who knows? But now we can't, because then that's gonna screw us up in next year, or two years, when we're sitting in there and they're reviewing it, and there's four more. Because, I mean, I drove, there's not all, there's the ones that were sold, there's a few that had cleared lots.
Yep.
But there isn't a whole bunch of houses going up.
Yeah.
So the, everyone might say, hey, look, I'll make a quick nine, ten grand, I got it developed, I really don't wanna go out there anymore, and I'll sell it for ten or fifteen grand, and it's off my hands, good. And then we're all upset, because now they're all worth fifteen grand, twenty grand. But again, I mean, there's just like two separate issues, what's the agreement? Do we have a leg to stand on? At least if we say no, like, then we can say, well, you know what, we said no, we, we stutter around, I guess, and not underselling it for ten, because other people might just jump on board, right?
I can make a quick call to the lawyer, but I will say that once you start setting those, those values or whatever on it, that is what your sense values are gonna become.
Yeah. I completely agree, I mean, we can't have that, but, um-
I will make a call tomorrow.
Are we going to be stuck with all these lots again?
It's possible. You have the ability to extend, um, the people can come back to us to extend it for another year for a thousand dollars. And what we've done in the past, and again, Council can choose to do as they so wish, what we've done in the past, if you've made a reasonable effort, and say you're partway through, you already have a foundation in, I don't see why we wouldn't, but if you've done absolutely nothing, Council may choose to say, no, no, we, we don't believe you've done anything with this, so we're gonna take it back into our inventory. And once it comes back into our inventory, you can sell it for what you want. Because up until that point-
Or don't sell it at all.
Correct. Because up until that point, when we did the thousand-dollar lot sales, we sold everything based on assessed value that was owned by the town of the Paw. So there were people that bought little chunks of back lanes, or just little pieces of god knows what, for six thousand dollars, because that's how we felt was the fair, inequitable way of selling it on the assessed value. So if we start messing around with the assessed values on this-
So if by chance, just if by chance, we were to decide that this is something that we were going to go forward with, the new person who would own that lot, would they still have that two-year time period, the exact same? Or would their time period be less a year, because it was part of that original deal? Like, I, there's just so, there's so many-
No, no, what's the agreement, sir?
Well, two years, but, but it would be a new landowner, so I'm not, I don't know if that changes.
You don't have an agreement with that?
Is it the original purchaser that has the agreement?
You only have an agreement with the people who are selling it, you don't have an agreement with the second person. That's none of your business.
Even though they say that the person's willing to do that, like, and they did make